Okay, it's about that time. If you would. Could you, how much more would you say?
Our most gracious and my father will we thank you for this day. Lord, we just thank you for all the many blessings that you give us each day. And we thank you for your son, Jesus, that died on the cross for our sins. And Lord, go with us as we have this meeting, that it would be held to give you honor and glory in these things, please, yes in thy name, amen.
Amen. Your word remains standing, I pledge my worship. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and infinite, just as in heaven. Pardon me. All right. Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if you have a cell phone, if you would mute or turn them off for the duration of the meeting, we would greatly appreciate it. All right. Everybody has a face covering on? All right. And Lucy, would you go ahead and call the roll?
Yes, sir. Myrtle, here. Eugene?
Here.
Brendan?
Here.
Mayor Self?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
John?
Here.
Mayor Self, you have a call.
All right. Okay. How do we get? All right. If you would, Lucy, would you go ahead and read the minutes from the April meeting?
Yes, sir. Mayor Arthur Self called to order the regular meeting of the council at 7:00 PM on April 12, 2021 in the town hall. The invitation was given by Myrtle Van Cleet. Pleasure allegiance was recited by all. Roll call was had, the following persons were present. Mayor Arthur Self, Councilman Myrtle Van Cleet, Eugene Kiley, Brenda Lowe, John King, Steve Brewer. The minutes from the March regular meeting were read. Brenda Lowe made the motion to accept, seconded by Eugene Kiley, motion carried. The financials for March were given. Steve Brewer made the motion to accept them as given. John King seconded, motion carried. Reports of officers. Councilman Brewer reported on a meeting he had with Commissioner Washburn. Commissioner Washburn says that he accepts responsibility for our roads and will be glad to work with us. Councilman Brewer noted that the cost to tar and gravel a mile of road is $27,000. Mayor Self says they will get with Commissioner Washburn and negotiate these jobs, specifically Copperzill Road and Smith Mill Road. He suggested that we use the Moving Blunt County Ford funds to pay for those projects. Brewer made a motion to pursue this negotiation. Councilman Kiley seconded and motion carried. Old business, Matt Taylor with Carr Rigs and Ingram CPA took the floor to go over our recent audit. Mayor Self explained that our, also that our new alarm system was now up and working. New business, Mayor Self read several points of Act Number 2021-157, recently signed by Governor Ivey. It moves municipalities off the presidential election cycle to avoid constitutional issues caused by shortening an elected official's term of office. This one-time change requires extending the current term by 12 months. This also moves qualifications of candidates from July to June to provide more time to, for confirmation of a candidate's eligibility to appear on the ballot before the printing of the ballots. It shortens the runoff time from six weeks to four weeks to mirror county and state elections. This also requires the clerk to file a copy of each certificate of election with the Secretary of State and Alabama League of Municipalities. Mayor Self asked for permission to replace the welcome to county line signs that have been damaged. The clerk noted that it could be done for approximately $300. Myrtle Van Cleet made the motion to proceed. John King seconded, motion carried. Mayor Self noted that we need to get with Blunt County about replacing a town limit sign on Dean's Ferry Road and also a street sign for Dean's Ferry at the intersection of County Line Road. Mayor Self explained that our MOU with Jefferson County is up for renewal. He read Resolution Number 23021. Did I make the mistake there? I think that's supposed to be 2021-001 and the MOU agreement with Jefferson County Commission to participate in the region, in the Region 6 debris removal contract. Steve Brewer made a motion to approve this resolution and the signing of the agreement. Eugene Kiley seconded, motion carried. Resolutions and ordinances. Mayor Self read the zoning ordinance Number 2021-002. Steve Brewer made motion to accept as read on the second reading. Eugene Kiley seconded, vote was unanimous. Mayor Self did a first reading on the new ordinance, nuisance ordinance. This will be carried over to the next regular meeting and brought up for a vote. A motion to adjourn was made by Myrtle Van Cleet and seconded by John King. Motion carried, meeting adjourned, respectfully submitted.
Okay.
So I need to fix that number?
Yeah, it should be 2021.
That's what I thought.
And also, you need to strike, motion carried. And let's see. We got a, during the last meeting, it was, a motion was made and a second was made, but we never voted. We never carried through and voted.
On which one?
Oh, on the.
Number, Program 4, under new business.
Under new business, okay. Number 4, under new business, okay, so.
The very last.
Okay.
Motion carried, needs to be spoken.
Okay, so then we did not, the motion was not carried?
Right, the motion, no vote was heard.
Okay. Steve made the motion. Now, is this, that was for the MOU?
Right.
Okay.
The motion was made, a second was made, but we did not vote.
Okay.
We got, I got distracted and I failed to call it to vote.
Okay, okay.
So we will, there, we will address that later in the meeting.
And on item 4, Lucy?
I will note that there wasn't, there was no vote.
Right.
Yes, ma'am?
On item 4, where it says that Washburn says that he accepts responsibility, that should be a accept, ACC.
Yes, yeah, I put the wrong one on there, didn't I? Okay.
Any other corrections or comments?
Let me see right here.
That's out of reports. What she was referring to was reports of officers on the first page?
Yes, on the first page, okay.
And?
He was a accept. He, Washburn said accept. He accepted, his ACC, ACC, yeah, that's what. All right, you, got you.
Okay. Okay, well, again, any other corrections or comments? All right. Do we have a motion to accept with corrections?
I make a motion and we accept with corrections.
I'll second.
All right. Steve made the motion and Brenda seconded. Let's see. All on paper. All right. Motion carried. All right, now to our financial reports. All right. Seems to be more and more of them. All right, we'll start off with the general fund account. The beginning balance was $29,891.14. And the ending balance was $31,834.73. Next up, capital improvements fund. Our beginning balance was $14,909.17. Our ending balance is $16,096.77. We've got our annual proceeds from the trust fund.
Yes.
So that was good, all right. The annual trust fund was $3,612.60.
The sample since we had that expense.
Right, for the lights. Yeah, then just had to look at that. All right, next up is rebuild Alabama diesel tax. Beginning balance is the beginning balance of it. Rebuild Alabama diesel tax is $3,588.69. Ending balance is $3,860.8. All right. Next up is the rebuild Alabama gas tax. Our beginning balance is $11,253.30. And our ending balance was $11,965.15. Okay. All right, the 2 and 7 road account. Our beginning balance was $10,378.14. Our ending balance was $10,043.54. All right, next is the 4, 5, and 6 road account. Beginning balance is $12,494.84. And our ending balance is $12,663.92. All right. And the last is the Moving Blunt County Ford account. Our beginning balance was $24,987.39. And ending balance was $25,462.11.
Mr. Mayor, I have a profit loss and a profit loss detail that I'd like to give you too, just for your, something for you to look at. Maybe just want to look at it later. I've got.
Okay. I'm taking a look at it in a little while. Okay. Are you any questions or comments on the financial records? Financial reports? All right, do we have a motion to accept as read?
I make a motion and we accept them as read.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion made by Brenda, a second, by Myrtle. All right, all in favor? All right, motion's carried. All right. Let's see here. All right. No reports from state committees, special committees. Reports of officers. Steve, we had any update on?
No, sir. They said that Tanya told me that she would send out when they decided to schedule the work in and they haven't seen anything, so.
And they're still waiting on him, okay. All right. Very good.
They've been quite busy.
Yeah. All right. Going to old business. Lucy, we, I haven't been down County Line Road, so I don't know whether the sign's been replaced yet or not.
The signs are replaced.
And they look good.
Okay, very good. How about the road signs, any?
Oh, really?
Town limits?
Was I supposed to call them on those or?
We didn't discuss it.
I shouldn't have assumed, I should have asked you. I thought you were calling, you were talking to him and ordered the signs and you didn't and you made me do it. I'm sorry. My bad. I will call him. I will call Tanya and order those. But I'll need I'll need to know, I know where the, where the street sign needs to go, but where does the speed limit sign go?
Okay, the town limit sign is on Dean's Ferry. If you go down Dean's Ferry past Copperzill, it's maybe, it's less than a quarter mile down there.
It's right past the last house before you go down left of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Just about. If you get to the entrance to the mine, you've gone just too far.
Okay, so it's.
But it's right there.
It should go, is the post still there?
Yeah, the post and the sign is there, but the sign is so corroded.
Okay.
It's hard to read.
So it needs just to be replaced, let's say, speed limit.
No, it's a town limit sign.
Oh, town limit, all right.
Town limit.
And the, at the four-way, I think it's the Dean's Ferry
Past Copperzill.
Road sign is missing.
Yes.
And you pass the last house on the?
Yeah, it's just, it's before you go down that steep hill right there, where that brick house is on the left. Where Ms. Glover lives, do you know where Ms. Glover lives? You know where Sue Hayes lives, right?
I don't know people down there, I'm sorry, I wish I did. Okay.
I should not say Hayes anymore.
It just passed, when you get to Copperzill, there's what, 1, 2, 3? And it's the fourth house, I believe.
I will get that ordered tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, and I need to check the other two entrances. And another one on Cannonine Road by the, by what used to be Mr. Hayes' cross street on, from his house. It's still in pretty good shape. And I think the one down here on the Trafford side is still in good shape.
Okay.
And I gotta look, I gotta check out the one on Smith Mill, see what it looks like. But it's, and make sure.
To be honest, I don't think there is one on Smith Mill.
Okay. Well, we need to get one put up down there, so.
If you ever get that road fix on, it was pretty easy.
Okay. All right. And we'll carry that over, carry this over to the next meeting, but the town signs are taken care of.
We'll get those ordered.
Okay. All right. I guess all the old business I had, I do not have anything for new business, or petitions, applications, communications. Under resolutions, we are bringing the nuisance ordinance up for a second. It was read incomplete, completely during the last meeting. It's very lengthy and unless requested by the council, I'm just going to read the title, which is a nuisance ordinance 2021-04, is established as a nuisance ordinance and abatement procedures for abatement of nuisances within the town. All right, the council has read the ordinance. Do you have any questions on the ordinance? Okay. If not, do we have a motion to accept as written?
I'll make a motion, we accept as written. I'll second.
All right. Steve made the motion. Seconded by John. All in favor? All right, motion carried. The ordinance has been adopted. All right. As I mentioned during the review of the minutes from the last meeting, we had a memorandum of understanding between the town of County Line and Jefferson County for utilizing the contract price or debris, emergency debris removal that was negotiated by county commissioners in Region 6. And it allows us to call any of the contract contractors to remove debris if necessary, and we will receive the contracted price that was negotiated. All right, we, during the last meeting, we had a motion and we did have a second, but we, I got distracted and never called it to a vote, so we need to bring, once again, bring up the memorandum of understanding and ask the council to authorize the MOU with Jefferson County. I need a motion to, to enter into the memorandum of understanding.
I make a motion that we enter into the memorandum of understanding with Jefferson County.
Okay. Brenda has made the motion.
I'll second it.
And Eugene has seconded. At this time, we will vote, all in favor? All right, motion carried. Okay, that was, that was oversight on my part. Hello, I got distracted and went on to the next item on the, on the agenda.
I must have been distracted and just wrote down the procedure.
Yeah. Anyway, that's all I have on my agenda tonight. Does the council have anything?
Uh, are we gonna get a possible transfer of our money for the year? That we're gonna work with budget, is what I'm trying to think of, since the I can't think of the name.
Are you asking the mayor if he just got a budget?
Yeah, budget, yes.
Okay. I did not bring the budget here tonight, but I, I'll put it back on the agenda because I had, had it dropped off until after we got the audit report back. Now we've got it back, I will bring the audit, the, the budget up again, but I'll do it at the next meeting. Okay. Anything else from the council? Okay. Questions, comments? Okay. Myrtle?
I make a motion we adjourn. John's looking at me, I'm not one of these ones.
All right. All right. Myrtle has made a motion to adjourn. And John has seconded, all in favor? All right. All right.
Who seconded?
John.
John. And motion carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.